Okay. Called Meeting to Order. Good evening, class. Welcome to the BUHS Board October 19th, 2015 meeting being held in Science Room 233 as we have a presentation from the Science Department. So, first question is, did everybody get their homework done?
Yes, sir.
If so, would you please pass it into Ms. Hood? No, it's great to be here. Thank you for inviting us and we're looking forward to the presentation. We will have you on the agenda quite quickly. But we should start with the Clerk's report first and we need to approve the minutes of our October 5th meeting. Is there a motion?
Remove the minutes of October 5th as presented.
Can we keep? I heard the seconds.
Laurie.
Laurie, okay. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the October 5th minutes? If not, all in favor of approving the minutes of October 5, 2015, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions?
Obstained.
I'm abstaining.
Yes, Ruth and Laurie abstained. With that, take, okay. All right, the minutes are passed. Communications? Communications? No? If not, is there anything else for the Clerk's report? Okay, we will move on to recognition of groups and/or individual visitors. And we have quite a few faces over there representing the Science Department and we'll turn it over to you.
Great.
If you can introduce your others as appropriate.
Thank you.
Cory.
So I'm Michelle Hood and I would like to welcome and thank you for coming to our Science Department this evening to look through the window and see a little bit of the work that we're doing in our new ninth grade Next Generation Earth and Space Science course. With your 1% support this past summer and with the critical leadership of Scott Moore and our local expert and the input of our teachers in the Science Department, we've created a new course that we believe is well-aligned with the next-generation science standards and the, um, that honors the shift to proficiency-based learning that our students are experiencing. With me tonight are Scott Moore, Ben Lord, and Dan Braden, all of whom helped create the rubrics that underlie the course that the rest of us used to write the curriculum that we are now delivering for the first time. Scott and Ben are both current teachers of the Next Generation Earth and Space Science course. So I will now turn the meeting over to Ben Lord, who will be leading you in an activity analyzing the relationship between mass and weight.
Hi, everyone. So, excuse me, I'm going to turn off the overhead projection here. Okay. And if you can't see, feel free to adjust yourself so that you can get a sense of... As a quick introduction to where we are, I just want to set the stage a little bit. You know, step into our time machine and travel back to when you were a ninth grader perhaps. And I imagine coming back into the high school and going through the experiences of, you know, going from class to class and enjoying a science class here. The context that this particular lesson falls into is when we were investigating space systems. And one of the key things that we're looking at here are the dynamics of how planets orbit bodies in space. And as you might imagine, the key to that idea is gravity. And so, we might start off with a story about Isaac Newton because everyone knows, like, he sat under the apple tree, right? And the apple fell and he was like, "Oh yeah, gravity!" As if things falling was like some great discovery. And it takes a bit, actually, to realize that it's not actually that he saw the apple falling, like in the picture on the left. It's that, and you know, this is an apocryphal story anyway, but it's about the apple falling to the earth, but the moon doesn't. That was the really puzzling question that Newton was able to figure out. And so, when introducing this, we've, by this point in the class, we've already kind of talked a little bit about the patterns that scientists have seen in how things work. And gravity is now, and Newton's explanation of how all that happens is going to come in to provide us with a reason why it is that the planets do the funny things that they do. There we go. So, if gravity is so important, how do we go about measuring it? You know, we must have some scientific gravity-detecting device out there. So, and indeed, we do. And probably all of you are familiar with a gravity-detecting device that you use in your home, maybe perhaps, in your bathroom. The scale is a gravity-detecting and gravity-measuring device. And so, the actual force of gravity is what we call weight. And so, weight is measured in the non-science world in ounces and pounds. Those are the things that most Americans will be familiar with. But since weight is a force, in this case, or weight is a measure of a force, we'll measure it in Newtons, named after the apple guy. And we use a scale. And basically, a scale is like a, it's a spring. So we can step on our bathroom scale and as the spring compresses, we get a sense of how much force it's taking to press that down, so we can measure it. Right? And so, if you have transported yourself back to like where you were in ninth grade, maybe you're thinking of, you know, Mrs. Burbank and all of that. And she would spend all this time with me on like the difference between mass and weight. But really, like, what's the difference? What does it really matter, right? Mass and weight are kind of the same thing. You arrive into, I arrived in the ninth grade science class probably with the conception along those lines that, you know, heavy things are heavy, light things are light. What does it really matter what you call it? These science people are really hung up on a lot of the vocab. Why do we care about a difference between these two words? And to give a sense of this very common tactic that science teachers have used in the past is to say, "Let's do a thought experiment. We're going to take you right now, we're going to put you on a bathroom scale on the earth and we're going to weigh you here." And since we're, we have a scientific and bathroom scale, we're going to measure in Newtons. And so, your weight on earth would be 560 Newtons, perhaps. Now, in this thought experiment, we take you to the moon and we put you there and we figure out that, oh, actually, on the moon, you now have a weight that's different. Well, that makes sense. The moon has less gravity, so I go to the moon and my weight is only 90 Newtons, say. But here is the critical difference. And this is what Miss Burbank kept trying to drive home for me is that my mass will stay the same no matter where it was, that my mass would always be 56 kilograms. That this measure of how much of me there was didn't change, even though the amount of gravity that I was experiencing, the force of gravity that I was experiencing did. So, at the beginning of this activity, students will be coming in with this brand-new conception that mass is how much of me there is, how much stuff I'm composed of. And my weight is the force of gravity that is acting on me. And, you know, at this point, I probably get a lot of nods in the classroom being like, "Oh yeah, that makes sense. That's different, you know, I get that." So, if at this point it's, we have this sense of difference between mass and weight, then the next question is, why is so easy to confuse them? Right? So, mass is not measured with a scale. It's measured on a balance. Weight's measured in a scale. Mass is the amount of matter and weight is how strong that force of gravity is. Mass is measured in grams. Weight is measured in Newtons. So, is there something going on between mass and weight that makes it so difficult to tease out? Which is where we would begin this activity with this kind of question. And so, what I'd like to do is give you an opportunity to experience a way of answering that question, a way of looking at the world to puzzle that out. So, I have here, and, oh, thank you. I have here a copy of a lab which would probably take us a whole block to go through and talk about, but we're going to try and do it within just a few minutes. So if you want to take one of these, go ahead and pass it on down so that everyone gets one. Oh, we're going to skip through the warm-up. We're not going to have you write out any questions necessarily. And in fact, we're going to modify the procedure that we're doing here some because this procedure would entail you actually finding the mass of these little objects here. But fortunately for us, we've already painstakingly measured the masses of each of these and etched them onto the surface. Okay, we didn't actually painstakingly measure them. We bought them that way. But we have, we have already a mass measurement that someone used a balance to determine. And so, what I'd like you guys to do is to break up into groups of four and you can find yourself a space in the lab and you will find, at that space in the lab, in addition to a bunch of objects which have all been massed, you will find a gravity-detecting device here, which is basically a spring. And you'll notice that on one side has a capital letter G, or, sorry, lowercase g on one side, but we're not going to use that because we're going to be measuring weight. So you're going to look for the side that has an N on it. And you may also want to look carefully at this spring scale to adjust the nut up at the top here so that you can line up and calibrate your scale here by lining up that little plastic disc with the zero. And then, as you go through, what you're going to be doing is recording, oops, wrong side, is recording, try again, the relationship between mass and weight. So, we're going to give you some graph paper and you can set up a little table for yourself with some one side, the weight of the object on the other. And you can mind your question, your purpose here. Is there, why is it so confusing to have mass and weight be separate things? By looking for a relationship between them. Okay. So, give me a thumbs up if you feel like you understand the directions of this assignment. Okay, fantastic, great. So, if you find yourself around, I'll pass out some graph paper for us and we can get started.
Do you guys want to be a group here for more? Did anyone put their thumbs up when they asked if we understood?
That's why you got a college professional.
Where are we going?
Well, that doesn't do anything either. I mean, what's that? This is 20. I mean, can you, you're in one day and that's all right.
I always liked science.
Let's talk about a relationship between mass and volume scale. If any. Now, if this were a full block-length class, we'd have you doing the graphing yourself here and constructing the graphs so that you could find the relationship yourselves. But when we have, with the short time that we have, let's see if we can make sense of this together. Can somebody give me, remind me, what's the maximum mass that we're dealing with in this experiment? One thousand? Thousand grams, okay. So, we want, I'm going to, I'm going to be imprecise here in a way that I wouldn't normally be in class just for the sake of time. So I'm going to divide this up into about 10 people, 10 people's faces down the screen. That is not 10, is it? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, almost 10. Okay? So, 20, 40, 60, 500, whoops, I miscounted. Yet again. 90, so. Here we are. Now, what was the maximum weight in Newtons that folks measured? Okay, well, that'd be 10, nice and easy. 10? And let's put 5 about here, just to save time. A thousand, wait a second. So 1,000 grams is your top mass? And 10 Newtons is your maximum? So I assume that that 10 Newtons was a measurement of that 1,000 gram mass? Okay. So, put a dot right there. Okay. And then, after that, it wasn't 1,000 grams, then it probably would have been something. 500, okay, great. So we have a 500-gram mass. All right? And what was the Newton measurement there? 5. Okay? So, plot a point there.
This just, this table is, it's all graph.
I said 5.
Yeah, okay. So, we're your publishers. Okay. And then the next mass down from 1,000, 500 was? Yes, yes, I saw it here.
Forgot what I was answering. 200.
Okay. And what was the Newton measurement for that, those 200 grams?
2.
Oh, wait a second. I think I'm beginning to detect a pattern. However, I'm not ready to call it yet. I think I need more data still. So, let's get at least one more measurement. So, after the 200 pound, or the 200-gram mass, what was the next one down? 100 and, wait, 1 Newton?
Yeah.
Yeah. So what gives? Why is it so difficult for us to keep track of mass and weight even though they're clearly different quantities? What's actually happening here? So, what I'd like you to do right now is just turn to the folks that you worked with and discuss your answer to that question based on the data that you got and the relationship that we've described between those. Why is it so hard to keep them straight? Go ahead, talk it out. And take it back in three, and two, and one. Don't forget to turn, face me, and smile because that's the rule. Okay. So. Either way, I know.
They're not smiling.
That's right. It's absolutely required in science. So, in this, in this case, can somebody make a, offer us some ground, some conclusion that they've drawn on that we could use for further discussion? Now, we're not even going to have the time for further discussion, but let's just put it out there. What is it about mass and weight that makes it so difficult to keep them straight? Yeah?
I think the non-scientific community just use the word "weight" when they need to. They would perhaps be better using the word "mass." So, non-scientists walk around confusing the issues.
Man, I'd really like to lose some weight.
Doesn't it have some volume now?
Yeah, that's next class. But, I mean, can you, can you see why on earth it would be easy to interchange those words and not throw anybody off? When there is this, this very, when there's such a consistent relationship, we can get away here on earth talking about weight and mass as being the same thing. But, you know, if I go out into space or into the moon or basically any place off the surface of the earth, it's going to be really difficult to talk about both of those and interchange them because they're not going to be related like this in the same way. And so, that's a little taste of how we've set up the class to approach problems like this. And let's take you on to another.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah?
So, if you're on the moon and the gravity's like 1/6 of what it is here, how is the relationship? Why is the relationship going to be different?
Okay.
That's what I'd like to know.
Right. So, let's see. If, are you saying, "Why is my weight different on the moon?"
No. Why is the relationship between mass and weight? The graph we have now?
Oh, okay.
Would it be different on the moon?
I see. So, actually, will, let's say I did the same experiment on the moon with the, with the spring scale and the same masses. What would people predict I would get there? Would it be aligned just like that? So, we would still be, like, our weight, the proportions would be the same. It would be that, still that same directly proportional relationship. But if I did half the experiment here and then half on the moon, then I'd totally throw things off. Yeah. Okay. I have definitely consumed the time that I have been allotted. Thank you very much. And Mr. Lawrence, Scott Lawrence is going to be here to take us through another experience which deals with plate tectonics, yes?
So, one of the fundamental shifts of the next-generation science standards is the requirement that students are expected on a fairly regular basis to use, interact, and, you know, interpret computer simulations and models. So, what we're going to show you here tonight is, okay, an example of one of those types of simulations. This is one on plate tectonics. The theory of plate tectonics is to earth science what the theory of evolution is to biology. Okay? It is the unifying theory, the unifying force. And as scientific theories go, it is relatively young. It's only 50 years old. All right? So it's something that's still being worked out. Now, traditionally, when you're talking about plate tectonics with your students and trying to get them to understand what's going on, you had to rely on things like cutting things out with pieces of paper and gluing them, looking, "Okay, well, this coastline kind of matches up with that one, so I'm going to put this here," or maybe some clay and moving that around. But it was really hard for the students to get a good understanding of actually what's going on with the dynamics of the plates. So, this is why these simulations are such a powerful learning tool. So the activity I'm going to briefly walk you through is something that actually took two full blocks to do. It's got two parts. The first part has to do with their learning about the two basic types of crust that being oceanic crust and the other one being continental crust. And the other part, the second A part, is about the plate dynamics. So I'm going to pass out the actual handout to you, but we are not, and we are going to try to do all of it. Thank you. So, what we have on the screen right here, and I apologize to those of you who have to turn around and look at it, is basically an illustration of the earth's crust. And over on the left, you have the oceanic crust. And over on the right, you have the continental crust. Now, the front page of that handout that Mr. Woodward is passing out is a table that the students have to fill out based on the characteristics. So what they have to fill out on there, okay, is the thickness of the crust, okay? Its temperature and its density. And they're actually given some little tools which allow them, right, to actually measure them. So, for example, to measure thickness, they just pull this roller out. And there they go. So. There it goes. And we don't want to measure the water. And then you can go over, and there's the continental crust. But I think most of you can see that, okay, the continental crust, okay, is significantly thicker than the oceanic crust is. So we'll put our ruler back. And next, we'll go with temperature. So, here is the temperature of the oceanic crust. Here is the temperature of the continental crust. And one thing you have to be careful with the temperature scale here, and I tell the students about this, is, you know, you've got to promote the same relative place because if you go and move, okay, farther down into the continental crust, all right, the temperature is going to go up. So that one, okay, can be a little misleading. Actually, what I had my students do is actually look at the temperature this way because this is over where Ben's fire drill procedure is. You can, you can do the temperature. So this shows, okay, the temperature's, again, it's tough to see on a screen, okay? So here's cool, here's warm. And believe it or not, it is the oceanic crust that is slightly cooler than the continental crust. But really, not that much. And lastly, is density. So there is, all right, the density of the oceanic crust as composed to the density of the continental crust. Which one is greater? Oceanic is. Yes, quite a lot. That's going to be very important when we move on to the next part about the plate interactions. So, basically, this first part, we have learned that the ocean crust is thinner, right? It's slightly cooler. And what's very important, okay, it is denser than the continental crust. And that's going to be really crucial when it comes to the plate interaction. So let's move on to the plate interactions. This is the second part. And what's really cool about this is you get to build your own plate interactions. So over here, okay, you have your choices. You could have continental crust, young ocean crust. And over here, by the fire drill procedure again, is old oceanic crust. So, let's throw a few of these up here and see what happens. Let's start with, oh, old oceanic crust here. Let's put a little oceanic crust here also. All right. So, what we have here is two sections of oceanic crust, okay? Both the same age, should be about relatively the same density. And these arrows, okay, give us the option in which way we can move it. And I'm going to click on the red one. So in terms of plate tectonics, when things pull apart like this, we call that, okay, a divergent plate boundary because they're moving away from each other. And a place that occurs is at the mid-ocean ridges. So as they pull apart from each other like that, you're basically creating a thin spot, a weak spot in the earth's crust. And what can happen is magma can come up from the interior of the earth, right, at that weak spot, creating new oceanic crust. So, over time, what is going on is the old crust, okay, is moving away. It's being pushed away by that new crust that's being made in the middle, at the ridge. That's the concept of sea force spreading, right? That is the mechanism that actually moves the plates around the surface of the earth. So let's try something else. Reset all that and, well, we'll have an interaction between continental crust and old oceanic crust. Now remember what we said about, okay, the relative densities here. So before I click this green arrow, do we have any prediction of what's going to happen between the oceanic crust and the continental crust? What are some possibilities? What could happen?
The oceanic crust will go underneath the continental?
Why do you think the ocean crust is going to go under?
Well, it's denser.
It's denser, all right. So let's see if that is what occurs. And yes, that is exactly what occurs. So, when you have an ocean plate, excuse me, converging, because this process is called convergence, with a continental plate? convergence, with a continental plate, all right, the ocean plate always, always, always will subduct. It will go under. And as it goes under, it's going to melt. And that's what you're seeing right here. And if this goes on for long enough, something else will form on the continent. Do anyone want to tell me what those might be?
Volcanoes.
Those are volcanoes. So Mount St. Helens, right, on the west coast of the United States. That is what, okay, provides the magnasores from Mount St. Helens, right? The subducting Pacific Plate going underneath the North American Plate. Well, I think we've seen enough ocean plate. How if we put it in two sections of continental? All right? So we have some options here again. Well, let's push them together. So let's have convergence once again. Possibly, though the Rocky Mountains has a very complicated geologic history on them. But yes, part of it is due to convergence. But probably a better modern day example is, okay, the formation of the Himalayas, which is still going on to this day, where the Indian-Australian plate, okay, is colliding with the Eurasian plate. And the result is actually is both plates, to a certain degree, buckle upwards, creating a very high elevation mountain range. So there's one type of plate boundary I haven't showed you yet, and before we wrap up, let me do that. So we talked about convergence, okay, we talked about divergence, but one we haven't talked about is, okay, when they move side to side. Hold on, let me do it. Yes. All right, so we have two young oceanic plates here, and now, right, they are moving away from each other, okay, sideways. And on land, okay, this is what actually is occurring at San Andreas Fault. San Andreas Fault is part of a much larger plate boundary where it's, okay, actually a transformed plate boundary. So they're basically swish liking each other like two cars do. So through this simulation, ladies and gentlemen, okay, the students, you know, learn a better appreciation of actually what's going on in terms of, you know, the dynamics at the plate boundaries. And it really drives home that idea that really what's driving it is all about density, which is what you were talking about earlier when you were talking about things, you know, can be smaller but have a greater weight, or be larger, not weigh as much. That's all about density. So that is what really is driving the force behind plate tectonics is density. Thank you.
So we appreciate your coming and watching two sample lessons of our work in the new science course. Are there any questions? Yes.
Scott, what you did on the screen there, would you do it on the screen like that with students, or would the students be using that with their Chromebooks and doing that on their Chromebooks?
Oh, that specific simulation right there, Mr. Davis, actually cannot be done on Chromebook because it requires Java. And you can't download Java, so what I did with my class, like, one of our computer labs.
So they said each individual student had to play with that?
There's a lot more powerful when they can actually do it on their own. Does it take more time? Yes, it does, but it's a lot better learning experience for them to actually work through it on their own than me sitting up there guiding them through.
Do you have children? The mountains, they get cold.
Yes. Actually, the green mountains are still rising.
Why do you climb one at night?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
All right, so we move on to consent agenda.
Oh, we're here to observe the science.
You know, I'm just here as an observer. The science was just icing.
I thought maybe you were just monitoring the science department. Okay.
I know we're going to consent agenda.
Move. Always quick with the seconds. All in favor of going into consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? If not, we move into consent agenda, and we start with finance. Finance met on October 8th, and we have a fair number of warrants here that we approved, some of which had been prior approved but were not actually shown on the, on the agenda the last time around. So we've approved the June 30th. This was the wrap up of last June warrants, number 1240 and number 1241, for the amount of $15,490.54. Then September 21st warrants, which were the first ones of the school year, number 345, 46, 47, 48, 49, 1051, 1052, and 1053, in the amount of $795,641.92. And then October 5th warrants, number 1054 through 1056, 1059, 1061 through 64, in the amount of $750,711.82. There were no payrolls at this meeting to approve, but the other business that we talked about, we had several other topics, and one was the reviewing of the Whitestone Village property that the school owns, some property there, and we're starting to take a look at how we might do something with that property or make a change with it. And Sean and Frank met with the president of the Whitestone Village Association and had an initial visit to express our desires to perhaps make a change over there, and that will continue. There was nothing officially recommended at that meeting, but we are taking a look at those. We actually have three very small and probably questionably buildable, certainly lots over there, that were purchased back around early 2000s, I believe, and with the idea that we may perhaps do something with it in the building trades, but that's probably not the highest and best use at this point. So we'll keep you posted on that one. We also talked about the budget development reporting form. Frank has a little bit of a different approach to the way he shows expenses. That's more of a standardized approach, and we, everything was always done very, very well with Jim Kane, but it was, what we developed over the years, the way he represented various expense items and so forth. And Frank has proposed some revisions. It doesn't change the actual bottom line or anything, but it just changes a little bit how we designate certain things. It'll be easier to read, it'll be simpler, and it'll line up better with the annual report. So we talked about that a little. He went through and explained how we divide up expenses by program, school, and function in the summary report. I thought it was, I don't know if Mike and Sean were there, but I thought it was, it was a little clearer to me how it all works, so. The other thing we talked about is the budget planning timeline, and we will be moving into that soon with some... What's that? Oh, okay, we passed out a timeline so you can see when we're going to be starting our review meetings. Administrators, I believe, are working on budgets now. They look a little tired, so. I hope everybody stayed up to at least watch that one play. And I hope it won't be put into our lexicon plays.
It probably has to be used.
Friday night.
At the appropriate time, I'd like to speak to this.
Okay, all right, sure. Okay, so that was basically what we covered at the finance meeting, and our next meeting will be Thursday, October...
Wednesday.
Wednesday, October 21st, right. It is the 21st, but we moved to Wednesday this time. Okay, was there an SU, any SU finance activity?
SU finance didn't meet, but there was an SU meeting. I don't know if you're going to cover that or...
I wanted to cover this first and then when we get to the...
Yeah, so we do a meeting coming up on the 28th, I think it's Wednesday, and we'll be doing an overview of the budget, the SU budget, and then we'll go to other meetings and show you this timeline of specific programs.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Yeah, so if you take a look at this timeline, you can see the headings on the top of UHS with the dates and topics. So Frank and I have started to work with principals last week on looking at the, you know, looking at enrollment, looking at staffing, so they'll be preparing some initial draft information for us that will get plugged into the budget. Then, you know, we get the specialized service plan, apply that to it. So we'll have a document around November 3rd through the 10th to review the first draft of the principals. And then the finance committee slash budget committee, their first meeting to review at 5:30 on the 19th, will be looking at BAMS and the Currys Center budget at that point. The next week on the 23rd, we'll look at the district-wide capital plan in senior high. And then on November 30th, we'll look at the special ed budget and the revenue budget with the idea of, we'll have a public meeting on December 7th, and another meeting on the 4th, January 4th, and that's when we would typically approve the budget for a vote on the annual meeting on February 9th.
So you can see this is a little bit condensed from what we've done in prior years because we, I believe we had just had five meetings, but now we're doing two budgets per meeting, which I think we can still accomplish in a reasonable period of time without making the meetings too long. So it starts a little later than it has in the past, our part of it.
So then if you just take a look at the next column, the WSCSU column, again, same sort of inputs from administrators, and then, as Russ mentioned, the first review for the SU finance committee will be on October 28th, kind of a general overview of the budget, and then those special topics on November 18th, the central office, curriculum, and grants, December 2nd, special education, and then December 9th, actually that would be the SU finance approval because we would have our next SU board meeting on the next night on the 10th for the approval of that budget. And then on the right-hand side, you can see all the different districts, Brown River Town, Damarston, Guilford, and Brown. Questions?
Okay, thank you. Planning policy?
Has not met, but we do now have policies that have come down for review. We will be meeting before the next session, and there will be policies one for first reading next meeting.
You just say how many there are?
I have four, plus I'll select a local board policy to add to the bundle. The policies we have that came down are F1, student conduct and discipline, F8, student medication, H4, distribution of non-school-sponsored literature in the schools, and F9, student alcohol and drugs.
Did we get those yet?
Not yet.
Okay, thank you. And teacher curriculum?
We met earlier this evening from 6:00 to 7:00, and we had a really great presentation from the Fine and Practical Arts Department related to a new class that they want to add, a 3D digital design and art class that wants to be added. So we had a great presentation, I thought, from that, and we got to actually play with things. And the TCC approved them moving forward with that, and I think we just need to have the whole board feel okay while doing that, too. But five members of the board were at the TCC meeting that, and we approved the creation of this new class. There's no budget impact to adding the new class because we already have the hardware and the software. And the software is free for download for educational institutions and students, and we already have all the hardware that's necessary in-house. It'll just be an extra class that Braylon will teach, and they'll figure out the cycle in which that will happen, but it's just adding an extra class and an extra component to what students can learn in the area of digital design and 3D printing.
Does that need full board approval if it has no...
Not generally, there's no budget implication.
No budget implication.
But we want to let you know that we did that, which was interesting.
We have great trust in the teacher curriculum committee.
Thank you.
And it's five out of nine board members.
Right, so we're good.
Yeah, and if the program study is developed, you'll get a copy of that.
Right, yeah, and the reason why, I mean, it seems, at first I thought it would seem a little unusual that it's October, we're talking about a class for next year, but it's so that it can get to the program study so that students can select it and things like that, so that it can happen in the timeline to make that, all the printings and all that good stuff.
If you need a board member to take the class, I'd be happy to.
I think there's actually a line, there's like five of us that are going to be ahead of you now, so, but let me see if I can push out the waiting list.
Okay, thank you, Ricky. How about BAMS committee?
BAMS committee met this morning. Myself and Sean were there. We had a little bit of a scheduling snafu, so technically we were there, but we didn't actually have a full meeting, so we will reschedule one in the future.
Long day for you guys. Okay, WRCC is not met. We ordered our last activities. Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to approve consent agenda as presented?
I hope we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Second.
Ricky? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Seeing none. Consent agenda is approved, and we move on to administrative reports. Let's see what fun order we'll take today. How about student council and then high school? Student council, what's going on there?
Thank you. We haven't done a whole lot in the last two weeks, but our new clubs that met at the Activity Fair are now in full swing. Student council is accepting student applications through October 27th, so we're excited to read through some of those and be working with new members, especially underclassmen, as we progress forward through this year. Our Feed the Thousands campaign starts usually mid-November and ends, that'll end the first Friday before Christmas break, so we're starting to get into the swing of that and put together a presentation.
So we're starting to get into the swing of that and put together a presentation. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing, I think you got it.
Yeah. We meet Wednesday mornings, so we're looking to move forward on all those things.
So you're in a major recruiting mode.
Yeah, we have quite a few seniors this year, so we're looking to replenish the stock.
Are those positions, are those seats still elected by the class states?
No, the students who would like to be part of student council submit an anonymous paragraph to our faculty advisor, who then presents those paragraphs to our full student council. And we read through them and we only know the grade of the applicant who we are reviewing. And then we select applications that we believe are particularly strong or we tend to select grades that we don't have a high representation of in student council.
And I remember they made that shift a few years back when there was what they perceived to be a need for a more enthusiastic body of students. I don't know how they were selected, but I know that the application process was, what, a couple of years ago now?
Right, they changed it a few years ago to try to foster more interest, especially in more younger students.
And then there's a certain number of students per grade that would be, if there's that much interest and support, then they would be elected or chosen.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move right over to the senior high then.
Thank you. So several things going on at the high school. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge that 19 of our UHS band members have earned acceptance into the Connecticut Valley District Concert Band and five chorus members have, pardon the, district jazz choir. That festival will be November 20th and 21st here at UHS. We alternate hosting every year and it's great to have, you know, everybody from the Connecticut Valley come down here and spend two days doing band concerts and enjoying each other's company. Our Career Expo, you know, the Wyndham Workhorse is doing Career Expo this Thursday from 1:00 to 5:00. And we've put on a major push with our counseling department and I want to acknowledge that what they've done to get us ready there. They're offering workshops to students on things like how to dress for an interview, how to interview, what kinds of questions do you ask at an expo? And we have 70 students attending those workshops over the next day. And a total of about 100 UHS students will be attending the expo between 1:00 and 5:00. And those are students in grades 10, 11, and 12. So we're pretty excited to have that turnout. And I just want to thank the folks at the expo for having it here because for a lot of our students, it's a chance to really look at what they might do after high school if they're not taking, about going right into college. So we're excited for that.
I'd like to acknowledge the fact that Steve, Keith, and Michael have worked really closely with David Alstead, who is the main organizer, to make sure that, you know, UHS, Career Center students and BAM students are really part of the program. So that's great work.
And several area high schools are sending students as well, so it's great. We had our parent conferences last Thursday. They were pretty well attended. As I mentioned in my last report, I've begun to talk to some other principals about how they structure parent conferences. And I've been surprised so far to find out that a lot of them do something similar to what we do, but that a significant number of high school principals in the area, they don't run a parent conference at all. I'm not really a fan of that. So we're going to continue to look at that issue and kind of see what we can do, but, you know, I was kind of hoping to get a great idea from somebody, but there wasn't anything that came out. I want to acknowledge Bennet Goldschmidt-Sauer, she's an English teacher here. She was acknowledged by the Wonder Institute and had one of her essays called "The Yellow Line," except that as a winning entry. She received an award for that. She was asked to write about something that inspired awe and wonder. And I would ask you if you wanted to read that. It's a fairly short essay, it's called "The Yellow Line," and it's very compelling and it's a great read and it shouldn't take too long.
Where did we see that?
If you go to the Wonder Project, just Google "The Wonder Project," they'll have a 2015 entry list and you just click on her name.
What's her name again?
Bennet Goldschmidt-Sauer. It's great to kind of see a practitioner, you know, like our art teachers are often also active artists and, you know, they have shows and you can see them downtown. It's nice to see an English teacher having some work juryed by her peers and accepted as being excellent, so we're very proud of that. Also last week, BUHS TV was acknowledged by BCTV as a community partner of the year last year. And I want to acknowledge the hard work that Toby Moore, Allison Cram, Liz DeNord, and Peter Canizero do in supporting that program and keeping it vibrant and making sure that our content gets out to BCTV. I also would acknowledge Roland and Cor and everybody else at BCTV for the work they do, helping us with technical stuff, but also encouraging us to continue to send content to them. It's a great connection and we're very proud of it. Fall sports, track still has a few games left, or a few meets left, and I think they have two more regular season ones. Other sports are beginning the playoffs. You know, I'm proud that both of our soccer teams are in the playoffs, as is our field hockey team. They had a very dramatic win Saturday and it was great to see. And our football team will host a playoff game, a play-down game, this Friday against Champlain Valley. So we're excited for all of our athletes and the work they're doing. Lastly, Wednesday, I mentioned this last week and I guess I want to mention this again, I think it's very important. On Wednesday at 6:00 in the multipurpose room, we have a woman named Melissa Fernarld, and she's a licensed drug and alcohol counselor. And she will be here setting up a mock teenage classroom, a teenage bedroom. And I think it's minus the dirty laundry. But that bedroom will contain over 70 items that may indicate that a teen is involved in some high-risk behavior. That may be underage drinking, substance abuse, cutting, eating disorders, or any other high-risk behaviors we worry about with our students. So attendees will get a chance to look and kind of figure out which of those items are high-risk items, where they come from. And then the presenter will kind of share an overview of slang terms. We'll talk about how to talk to our teens about addiction, how to talk to our teens about high-risk behavior. And, you know, I encourage all of our families, the parents, to attend. I think it's a great program. It was offered at another area high school and I attended and I found it to be very useful. It begins at 6:00 and the presentation itself begins at 6:30, so.
When is it?
It is Wednesday in the multipurpose room.
This Wednesday?
This Wednesday. So it's a great opportunity to kind of learn from some experts in the area. Any questions?
Thank you. Let's go back.
Will we be invited to come to that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let's get back to Mr. Vaughn.
Hi, everyone. So just a couple things to review. Semi-minor, it's big picture, some of them. We started instituting daily announcements again, which I don't know, I assume that they were at BAMs at some point, but I found that we had no way to communicate events to kids other than writing them on a board as they entered school and maybe website and stuff. So we implemented a daily announcement thing that's being read in advisories now and hoping that it just improves student, you know, communication to students and, you know, promoting events and those kind of things. We've begun extensions, which is an after-school kind of support, help time for kids on Mondays and Wednesdays. Basically, progress reports went out and students who were receiving essentially poor grades are kind of assigned to go to extensions. And if they're on a sports team, they have, they get this thing called a pass to play. They have to go to extensions in order to be able to practice. That's essentially our eligibility plan for our after-school programs. And so that's begun and working out any kinks with that and some systems to make sure it goes smoothly. Taking advantage of our, well, Alert Now system, it's called Blackboard Connect, but kind of notifying parents if their child doesn't show up for extensions through that system. And so far, so good. We had an in-service on the 8th of October, it was a half-day, and it was with Rachel from the Terran Institute, and it was focused on personalized learning. She made a great presentation on grit and resiliency and the importance of teaching out with kids, identifying it, and trying to teach them the value. Also around the growth mindset, which is kind of, you know, there's some new literature out around growth mindsets, which I won't bore you with, but we talked about that. And also working on goal settings for their personalized learning plans. And interesting presentation, the recent trend with goal setting is to create SMART goals. It's an acronym. And there's a new, a new way of setting goals called WOP, which stands for Wish, Outcome, Obstacle, and Plan, the WOP. And so it's a, it's a, it's a different way to create goals. And our goals are focused on one of our transverbal skills, communication, and they're also setting personal goals. So they're doing lessons on how to write goals. Those are going into PLPs. I mentioned last time our website's being rebuilt and Allison Cram, who works at the high school, is rebuilding that for us. And I'm excited for it. It's going to be a little more simplified, it's going to be built through Google Sites. And I haven't seen a draft yet, but I know she has one about ready. And then just going back to the Career Expo, our eighth grade will be going over to the Career Expo, we're excited about that. And the credit goes to our counselors, BAMs, Paula Starkweather and Carrie Sullivan, who have worked with the teams to put this together. And also Peggy Maxfield, one of the, one of the core teachers who helped organize the day. So we're excited about that. That's, what's that, Wednesday, Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday. So that's all I got. Any questions?
You wouldn't bore us with growth mindset, but could you?
Yes.
Define.
A quick thing on growth mindset, it's essentially your outlook, it's having a, so if somebody says they can't do something, it's more, essentially taking the approach, you haven't learned how to do it yet. It's that thinking positively, thinking, just having a different outlook on things. That's about as simple as it comes.
Yeah, it's the idea that intelligence isn't a fixed commodity for students. And that rather than saying, "I can't do this," we say, "I can't do that yet." So the idea that students can grow and change over their time.
There's a lot more, it's obviously way more in-depth than that, but there's a lot of research that says that children and adults who have that growth mindset achieve at much higher levels.
That was evident when we did our lessons over.
All the science class.
To what we were able to accomplish tonight. Could I just mention, too, Keith, next meeting on November 2nd, Keith is going to be doing an overview of the BAMs program to the Guilford Central School Board. And so he won't be able to be at this meeting. And Sean, I'm hoping that you might be able to attend that meeting as well at 6:30.
Yeah, I can do that.
At the school.
Yeah.
I think they're very interested in, you know, hearing about the BAMs experience for their students. I know Keith is going to bring a couple of students and some staff from BAMs to Guilford School. And I think it'll be really informative for Guilford parents, kind of check in on how things are going.
So that's Monday, November?
2nd, I believe.
2nd, and that's 6:30 or?
6:30, yeah.
So Vaughn, why don't we do that in Guilford, not necessarily in Brin, because Guilford's still on the cusp of sending their children here?
Yeah, they still have a seven-year agreement to tuition kids in as opposed to joining the union. So I think they, you know, since it's only been, what, two years, they want to get a sense of how things are going.
It might be something you want to initiate in Brin at some point, too, as they have the option to go to Piantan.
I think, I think they do.
Well, we do stuff with the students. We go there and we, you know, we have a whole process we go through with transitions. And they, do they come here? They come here as well, but you're talking about the board, addressing the board?
Well, the parent and I do this.
We do a lot. Yeah, we do a lot with the, with the kids. From my perspective, we do a lot.
So that might be something to look at, to plan apparently. You do something similar in Dover, too, right?
Probably to a lesser degree. They have a kind of a recruitment night where they have like their gym open.
Area schools.
And the schools set up little displays, but, yeah. We have a nice trend with Dover kids right now.
Okay, thank you. Career Center?
Thanks, Mike. Tomorrow, the FBR, Future Business Leader of America organization, will hold its fall blood drive in the high school NPR room. So if you, I think there's a few spots open. If you're willing and able, stop by and get some blood. This semester, Amy Anthony, our engineering, one of our engineering teachers, has created a relationship with GS Precision and set up weekly tours of the wonderful plant they have over there. So her kids get a nice in-depth look of what goes on there. So it's broken down into weekly visits. For example, they go over, they'll go over three access milling one week, electrical discharge machining, finishing, plating, and programming within a 10-week period, which is a great exposure for our students to see what really goes on in the engineering firm. Tomorrow, our forestry teacher, Mr. Hamilton, and his students will be traveling to Randolph to VTC for the annual soils competition. And it looks like it's going to be a little chilly in Randolph. And Dennis has been, I think, 22 years participating in this competition, so good luck to him and his students tomorrow. The Career Expo, as Steve and Keith spoke about, is Thursday, and all of our students during eighth block and fourth block will be attending the third annual Career Expo. It'll be held in the high school gym NPR room. And our students have been practicing interviewing skills with WRCC's counselor, Ann Dorn, and our new co-op coordinator, Ray Dunn, and practicing mock interviews within the different areas of the Career Center. It's been really enjoyable for the students to be involved with what's right and what's wrong when it comes to an interview. So they should be very well-prepared for this experience, career experience. Our WRCC ambassadors, led by Betsy Gentile, has already begun this year. And that group consists of 20 students representing the different programs within the Career Center. And they normally, in the springtime, two are the sending school students and middle school students around our programs. But Thursday for the Career Expo, they're going to guide the 350 eighth graders that will be joining us and giving them their professional aspects of what to do within an expo setting. So good luck to them and kudos to Betsy Gentile. Acting will be attending Northern Stage in White River Junction this Wednesday to see our town. So it looks like a fun show. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Central office?
We'll wait till we get to net metering and.
Okay, we have two items under unfinished business. Okay, fourth chair has nothing at this point, so we move on to unfinished business. And we do have these two items there. And Vaughn, I believe you have something for us that we need to move on?
Yeah, I have a motion for the, let me just read it to you and we can have some discussion. It would be to move to continue to be a member of the PV Consortium of Remont Supervisory Unions and authorize the consortium via its agent, Competitive Energy Services, LC, to negotiate on the district's behalf net metering agreements with various developers to receive discounts no less than 30% on the electric rate charged the district by Green Mountain.
So this is the next step, because we, not too long ago, approved becoming involved with a consortium, right?
Yeah.
And this is the next step, which is to begin to move ahead to negotiate a contract.
Right. So the exciting thing is no less than 30% savings for your electricity.
So the exciting thing is no less than 30% savings for your electricity, which is really great.
Wasn't that 32% at one point?
This thing, no less than.
Right, okay.
Frank has a projection that is higher than 32%.
Which is higher than when we first started talking about it. I think we were talking more than 20.
20 or 20. And Hammerstown has 10, so that's, no, it's correct. So are we approving the contract that was?
No, you're just approving.
Continuing.
Continuing. And Frank should have sent, I think you all received an attachment in email probably a week ago, or maybe a little earlier than that.
I had the diagram.
With the list of questions, typical questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move to continue to be a member of the PV Consortium of Vermont Supervisory Unions and authorize the consortium via its agent, Competitive Energy Services LLC, to negotiate on the district's behalf net metering agreement or agreements with various developers to receive discounts of no less than 30% on the electric rates charged to district by Green Mountain Power.
Second. Second. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? High, opposed, or abstentions?
I abstain. I don't understand this whole thing. I'm all in on, I'm gonna vote on something I don't understand.
Okay. You abstained, and you've given your reason for abstaining. Okay, we have one abstention. And we move on to the next item, which is Act 46, discussion.
So as Russ mentioned, we had an SU board meeting last Tuesday. There was a lot of discussion about, wasn't a lot of discussion on Act 46? But we are now, all the boards, individual boards, have voted to form a study committee. And that was needed, consensus of the boards to do that. So what that represents is each board will have representation based on their equalized pupil numbers. And so the way it will work in this district is that because of the Brattleboro members, the town board would have six representatives, up to six representatives. And then all the surrounding districts would have one. And that would be a total of 10 members. If we had a 10, nine-member committee, then Brattleboro would have five. I know their, their board has already identified three board members that would like to serve on the study committee. I know they also have the option to identify board members from BUHS as part of that study committee. There's two ways you can do it, based on the statute. One would be board members from BUHS could be invited as ex-official members. Or, in this case, what we've chosen is board members from Brattleboro would, BUHS board members from Brattleboro could serve on the committee. So I know Bob has indicated his interest in doing it. I had hoped to get some of the outline districts more representation by asking Michael and Sean to serve. But the statute is very clear that it has to be the proportion of Brattleboro, you know, reps from, from that town. So that's not a possibility. Although, when the study committee meets, or actually prior to that, we're gonna make a point about having ex-official members from other, our smaller districts. So I really think it's important that, perception-wise, that we don't think that there's five or six members from Brattleboro dictating what the other district should do, especially in this, this type of research in terms of the viability of the options that we have. So I think that will happen. The board chairs are meeting tomorrow at 2 o'clock. Board chairs of all the district boards, just to kind of get a handle on the study committee rules, make sure everybody's on the same page. And then from there, we will, I think we have a tentative date for the study committee, which is November 5th, probably at 6:00 PM, something like that. So we'll just keep you informed on the process. But I know Bob will be meeting tomorrow. I think you're, you're coming, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So Bob, along with the other four chairs, will discuss this further so we make sure that we're all straight and going forward.
So I have a question. So the town school boards are invited to be on the study committee, but the UHS board is not?
That's right. Based on the statute, which is, it's actually not necessarily initiated under Act 46. It was really under Act 53, 153 and 156. Again, governance statutes. Let me read that section to you. Where a union high school, well, prior to that, I should read. The number of representatives does not need to be precisely proportional, but should be reasonably aligned with proportional number of equalized pupils. So in other words, Brattleboro Town has, Brattleboro has most of the students. And then you have Dumerson, Putney, Guilford, and Vernon, with probably between 10 and 13% of the students. So that's where you get the five or six to one. And then for the union high school, the passage is, where a union high school exists, the students from that school should be counted as part of the number of equalized pupil for their respective towns. In other words, all of the BUHS kids are divided up into their, their origin town. That the school should count as part of the number of equalized pupils for their respective towns. An option is to include up to X members of the union high school board as ex-official members of the committee with full participation rights but no voting rights. When considering representation on the study committee, boards may also consider appointing members from the union high school board as representatives of the Town Incorporated School District Board. So that's the one we're choosing. That Brattleboro, in this case, could decide that they wanna give two or three slots to BUHS reps from Brattleboro to serve on the committee. And I think that makes more sense than just having ex-official members that don't have the voting rights.
And that decision-making capacity lies with the Brattleboro Town School Board?
Right.
And how to go about filling in seats?
No, just offer those seats. And then it's really up to you guys, in terms of your availability and interest.
I think what I'm trying to determine is, does the BTSD have the power to decide if it's offering seats, ex-official versus?
Yes, ultimately do. But they have decided to do it as voting members.
And then this board, ultimately, in deciding consolidation, or not, doesn't vote, is that right?
That's right.
It's just the, just the town board?
Just the district boards, as opposed to the union high school board.
Right. So was Act 153 and 52 in conjunction with 46? Or is that an existing governance?
It's, it's new governance that were, were passed previous, you know, five years ago, three years ago. And then Act 46 is the latest.
Right. Act, Act 46 is referencing these?
Yes.
Passed?
So the study committee, you know, will, will look at all of the options. You look at the pros and cons. They make a report to the state board. They will keep their individual boards apprised. But it doesn't go to a vote to the individual boards. It actually goes to a vote to each town. So if there was a consensus to do the preferred structure, which would, you know, do the consolidation for next year, each town meeting would need to vote affirmative to that. If that didn't pass, then the second year is what they call a conventional model, which, you know, might be the member districts that want to consolidate. The third option that the committee will look at is the alternative structure, which essentially maintains the way our SU is functioning right now. But you have to make the case that we get the same benefits that we would have in a consolidated school district. And that, that might be tough to do. And presently, there are not the financial incentives that are under the preferred or conventional.
And that's an area, I think, discussion with legislation, who will be the alternative structure, not having the inability to get the tax incentive.
That's right. Yeah.
So the makeup of the new consolidated board would generally, what would the, what would the makeup be?
You know, if it was a preferred or the conventional, pre-K-12 board, kind of an operating board like this, representing each school district, but, you know, probably a nine-to-13-member board. It would be proportional, just like this is, where we have five Brattleboro reps, and then one for the outline of towns. It would operate in consensus, as this board has. I think some people worry that Brattleboro will dictate what happens. But I always use this board as a good example, that you people are not necessarily looking at, you know, I know you're concerned about your own towns, but you're really more concerned about the students and the student opportunities. And so, you know, I would think that that board would operate that way as well. We also talked about having school-based councils, where the board rep from each town, along with the principal and parents and community members, would form a committee or a board. They wouldn't have the same power as a school board, but they certainly wouldn't be advocates for their local schools, which is kind of what happens now with school boards. Because quite frankly, when we set budgets and look at personnel, there's not a lot of discretion when we're developing budgets that we wanna operate a school with 15 to 18 students a class. Now, that's 80% of the budget or more. So, there were other questions?
Yeah. When you, the council question?
Yes.
When you envision these councils, or somebody's envisioned these councils, I don't know who's thought of that, for?
I did, but the agency event is taking my.
I did, okay. So using us as the example?
Yeah.
Obviously Guilford, Vernon, Dumerson, Putney would each have their own council. Would you envision, like Brattleboro, Oak Grove would have a council, Greenshue would have a council, Academy, BAMS, the WRCC, and the BUHS? Would all each have their own council? So there essentially would be, you know, about 10 councils?
Yeah, I could see, you know, the BAMS committee, the committee process that you have in place would make sense. WRCC has the, the regional advisory board, so that's as strong a unit as it is. I could imagine BAMS and BUHS having kind of a school-based council. I don't know if every individual school might. They might, you know, Oak Grove has a pretty strong parent group, as does Academy and Creed Street. So, you know, with, with those individual principals, it probably makes sense to have it school-based. Because definitely the aligning schools will.
Right.
So that probably would make sense.
Would there be a list in towns outside of WSESU?
If we do the preferred method, other towns cannot join in. But in the second year, they can. And if we did a conventional, other towns could join in again in the second year, which would be the conventional.
They will be part of the study committee?
No, I mean, as an example, Marlborough has shown some interest, Dover, and they're joining their own study committee in Wyndham Central. That doesn't commit them to anything. But just in terms of the procedures and the legislation, the preferred structure is only within your district now, your current district. If other people wanna come in or consider coming in, then it would be in the second year.
And the preferred structure has the largest percent, or the 10%?
Yeah, it has the first incentive, being 10 cent reduction down to 8 cents.
And there's supposed to be cost savings derived from this?
Yeah.
So someone's gonna have to lose their job, right?
You know, the example I just looked at is the special ed consolidations. We, it was a two-year process. And it took us finally this last year to consolidate. And we saved $300,000. Now, I don't, I don't, through attrition, you know, we didn't.
Yeah, I can see special ed, excuse me. I can see how special ed are that way. But either services or programs, I'm not.
I can see small school staffing, where staffing in the shit between school, two schools, as opposed to, you know, one school getting a two-thirds position, other school a 50% position, just as we did with special ed. So I think there's, there's some savings.
Some will have to travel, or the students will have to travel, or?
I don't know. We've talked too about, again, I think the study committee will look at this, is, is looking at some school choice options that for some students, that if families live in Brattleboro, would it make sense for a percentage of students to be able to go to elementary choice in, you know, to the other schools as well? I mean, we've started to put together a list of some of the benefits that we think we would see from this. And it's not just based on financial benefits. It's more programmatic. But Frank will be getting some AOE, not numbers, but models, financial models, that he'll be able to apply to our own district. And that will give us a better sense of finances.
But wasn't the states, wasn't the impetus for this, to reduce local property tax, or?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
To get some kind of cost savings out of this?
Yeah. I think in a district like ours, there's probably not as much of the savings. But in some of those districts, where you have 10 different district boards, district schools, and some schools are pretty tiny, it's gonna make sense.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'd like to see how it works. Looking forward to that.
At what point would the structure be made evident? The structure of the board and so forth?
I'm sorry?
Well, at what point would the structure of the boards, the structure of the governments, governments be actually made known?
I think we'll know that through the study committee. Yeah, I think, I think when we do public forums, we're gonna need to know what that structure looks like. You know, it'll be, it'll be a pre-K to 12 board. It'll be proportional. You may, I don't think you were on the BUHS board then, but when I first started in this district, BUHS had an 18-member board.
I was on for two meetings.
Yeah. And you probably missed like four meetings, because they couldn't get a forum.
Yeah, there were never 18 people either.
So one thing that happened as a result of that is, is the reconfiguration of a nine-member board that would never missed a forum, I don't believe, since that's changed over in 2004. So that'll be a consideration, in terms of, you have to have it proportional to your per-pupil equalized students. But you can, you can affix a number that's manageable, or a higher number, and they're recommend, the state's recommending, don't, don't go over nine to 12 members. You probably want an odd number. But, you know, if, if we said, okay, so let's, let's have every town have two reps, well then Brattleboro's gonna have 10 reps. And, you know, you don't, you don't want a situation where you have 18 members for a board.
I was on the.
These guys have the warning, because they don't have to go to meetings, but I do.
I was on this board when it was like that for six months. And I never, in the six months, I never missed a meeting. And there was board members I never met. Because they never came to one meeting in six months.
So Sean, that question will be clear, you know, in terms of what the study committee would propose.
So that's gonna be potentially before the new year.
Yeah, I mean, I think November, December is kind of crucial time. We would have to have something ready for the third week in January if we're gonna bring it to voters in March.
Sort of warning period of?
Yeah.
30 or 45?
Whatever it is for our budget.
Yeah. So it's gonna have to move quickly, if it moves.
Are you garnering, are you asking for people to volunteer? You're looking for people from this board, from Brattleboro, to be on the?
I think we will be, yeah.
I'd be really interested in.
Any other interested members?
I was going to say I would be, but if, if people are extremely interested, and I'm only interested in the extremely interested.
On a 1 to 10 scale of interest?
Well, and I'm in the same boat with Laurie, like, if there's people that are extremely interested, but I'm in, I'd be interested as well.
Yeah, I'd have some interest as well.
I'm already getting questions, so.
Yeah. So part of it's gonna be the study committee deciding the, the numbers on the committee. And we'll know, I, I think we'll have a better sense of that possibly tomorrow, and certainly by early November. We'll keep you appraised as we go.
I just hope that they don't have only people who are for this thing on this committee, because there are people out there who are not for it.
I can guarantee you that the opposing viewpoint will be represented on the committee.
Good.
From Brattleboro?
From, well, from LSU.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on their unfinished business? If not, we have one piece of new business and, oh, you have it as well? Okay. I'll, I'll just give you an idea that it's one of the, we haven't done one of these in quite a while, where we're asked to, on an Act 250 permit, we're asked to sign off that the impact of the, it will not adversely impact our ability to deliver education. And we have one tonight that's as a result of GS Precision's decision to expand in Brattleboro. And I believe they, their plan would be ultimately to add up to 150 new employees. And that impact on the school would be projected to be a maximum of 35 new students over. That's a five-year period, I believe, but I don't have exact numbers. I'm just going from memory.
Well, they have a projected 35.
Oh, yeah, that is right. Well, mine is a blank, oh, yeah, there it is, okay. Yeah, 35 over a five-year period. And actually, the projected number of jobs is 100. I've heard from other sources that it probably will be more than that.
So 35 would be spread over BAMs and BUHS and BUHSs?
So that would have virtual no impact, no negative effect.
But not all ninth graders?
Well, we don't know who they are yet because there would be people that have, that are not yet employed by GS Precision. But if you have a normal curve of ages, it would be spread out quite a bit over the schools and... Could be a lot of existing students as well. Well, yeah, it could be people switching jobs and so forth. But there'd be a net, definitely a net change in the number of jobs there, which there has been as they've been able to find employees over the last few years. It's a growing concern, growing business, not a growing concern. Well, it's a growing concern too, I guess. That's how you use the word concern. Okay, so is there any, is there a motion, I guess, first off, to approve this school impact questionnaire that has no adverse impact on the BUHS?
I will, we approve the school impact questionnaire as presented.
Okay, there a second?
Yes.
Okay, Russ?
Another question? Is that something that the superintendent completes, or you have staff or team?
It's usually certified me to answer this question.
Yeah, it says there somewhere, it says, "From the superintendent or appropriate school official, they also serve as evidence." So we are providing evidence to run. We are, if they're approving or not approving, and he will sign the paperwork.
So the question is, do these schools have the capacity to accept the additional students listed above? We would say yes. Do you have any other comments? No. Are you available after sufficient notice to answer questions related to the above statement for Act 250 here? I would say yes.
Do you have a list of criteria that you review and determine?
Any other questions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, that's, we have consensus on that. Is there any other new business that we missed?
Mr. Chair?
We missed you the last time, Rose.
There is none, I know, but we agree.
Okay, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Nay.
Enjoy yourself.
Yeah.